Slow down, she got done.
Call to order this work session, we are going to be discussing housing production strategy, the financial incentives. I'll turn it over to Director Hart.
Good afternoon, everybody, sorry, I can't be there in person. So this will be fun and entertaining for all, I assume, but Nancy would have yelled at me if I tried to show up, so here we are. So today, we're talking about the housing production strategy yet again. And so what we have done so far is talked quite a bit about land use strategies. And what we have done over the last 10 months is really focusing on those because those strategies equates to what really is a change in the environment in the community. And so we thought that there was an importance of taking the time to really focus on what those types of strategies might look like. Before us today, we're going to talk about the different types of strategies that can be employed that aren't necessarily going to equate to a change in the environment that might equate to projects actually being able to occur where previously they weren't affordable for developers to make happen. And so we'll talk about three new types of strategies and how they all work together. And at the end of this, these are kind of the last bits of strategies that we are proposing. The overall housing production strategy. And we do have our consultants in the waiting room currently. So they'll be in the background to sort of help my COVID-addled brain with any questions that you all might have. And we'll just sort of as with all other work sessions we've done in the past. Please feel free to interrupt me and ask any questions as we go along. So, any questions before we get started? No? So again, quick overview of the housing production strategy, we're doing this because we're over 10,000 in population. They are tied to our housing needs analysis, which identifies that the housing growth need of 2,500 homes over the next 20-year cycle. And the housing production strategy is tools that council is looking to explore, investigate and employ to try to produce additional housing in the city over the next eight years or so. And then about at the halfway point, we'll have to sort of report to the states as to how we've done, what we're doing and what's next. And so this table shows you kind of the progress that we've made in terms of that 2,500 unit count that's needed as part of the housing needs analysis. The blue table area shows, or the blue chart area shows the for-sale housing need and what's been built since 2019. And then also the orange shows the rental housing that's been built or is still remaining to be built for rental housing for the housing needs analysis. The land use strategies that we've looked at so far have really been focused on the middle and upper income areas to support for housing production and mainly for for-sale housing. The items that we're going to largely be talking about today are focused more on the extremely low to low-income housing development opportunities where there's financial assistance or mechanisms that are needed to try to help make the housing production occur. So my slides will move forward. There we go. Um. Overall, for the housing production strategy, we have four different sort of buckets of tools that are proposed. We've already talked ad nauseam about the stuff in orange, that's the land use and zoning changes that we're talking through. What we're focusing on today is the remaining part of it. Under the development incentives, there are four that are listed. The fourth one for restructuring zoning incentives, that's more of the density bonus item that we've already sort of lumped into the land use changes. And so we're not going to go into great detail talking about those today. But we'll talk about the development of financial incentives, land use strategy, land-based strategies. And then kind of already a list of stuff that we're already doing that we want to codify in the housing production strategy to demonstrate that, you know, the city's not starting at zero, there's things that we have already done in the past that we will continue to do to help promote housing construction. So for development incentives or financial incentives, these are again largely focused for the very low, extremely low and low-income households that are needed for additional subsidies to actually get off the ground and be built. These are the types of housing units that go for the federal tax credit program. And having a city incentive associated with that type of a project can help with the tax, federal tax credit program. And it could help the project further pencil out to actually bring in that that level of housing to the community. And so there's three different types that we'll be discussing today to help on the financial side of the equation. But basically, the goal of this is to bring in the needed housing that market rate developers are not going to be able to do. And support the overall financial system through the federal tax credit program to bring in local dollars to support the project. What this looks like, there's a tax abatement program, which is this action 2.1. This is, as we've listed it out in the housing production strategy, we're not saying that immediately upon adoption of the housing production strategy, council will implement a tax abatement program. What we have proposed is that council will go through the process to evaluate whether or not there's a feasibility to do a tax abatement program for local low-income housing development. So this housing production strategy would not tie us into it. It would just require us to do some of the research and evaluate it and talk about it and figure out whether or not it's a tool that we'd be able to implement. Ultimately, what it would do here is we would provide a local tax abatement. I don't know if I heard somebody speaking or not. Sorry. I'll keep going. What this would do would provide a local tax abatement for what the council would identify as appropriate projects, this would not be for every single housing development. I would imagine that we would gear it towards, again, the extremely low to low-income households. And it would be largely towards those larger apartment projects that would provide more housing units. So you get a bigger bang for the buck. And it would be the city would not receive any of the additional tax monies that would be created off of the project for a period of time. The developer would would receive those funds back to them. And that helps with the bottom line and the financing tools to be able to get the project penciled out and to get the necessary loans. And then after the time period as identified by the city council and whatever program were to be evaluated, the city would then get the increased taxes associated with the project improvement back into the city's coffers moving forward. You know, usually when you look at something like this, there is a fiscal impact to the city because you're bringing in a higher population. You're bringing in more developments, which equates to an increase on services that are needed. But these projects, they're usually a handful over, I'd say, a 10-year period. And so it's a small increase in the number of developments that would be coming in. But it's a tool to sort of help bring in that that needed housing based off of that that chart that I showed you before where we're not doing well on the production of the extremely low and low income. This would be a tool to try to help do that. I went to a conference last week on affordable housing. And I got to ask the developers in the room and the nonprofits in the room the question, because we're talking about several different financial tools. If you had to pick one, one financial tool available to you, which one would you pick? Above everything else, and the majority of the answer was a property tax abatement program. Because that provides them the longevity of savings versus one-time savings of some of these other programs, so. It's something to consider. Again, as part of the housing production strategy, we are not tying ourselves to create a program, but we are just simply saying that the city would be willing to evaluate it and consider it for potential implementation. And so I'll stop there for that particular one, does anybody have any questions about a tax abatement program or does Nancy or their consultant?
Kelly, I'd like to know, since you talked to the developers. I've heard that all development in Lebanon has been stopped because of inflation and various costs. Would are they waiting for a tax abatement program to kick them back into gear, do you know?
No, development as a whole has slowed down due to inflation for sure. Cost of construction, workforce shortages and, you know, project manufacturing pipeline issues. We haven't stopped construction in Lebanon or in the state as a whole, but it definitely has slowed down overall. But the tax abatement program itself is really just geared towards those housing projects that are focused for income restricted units for the extremely low and low-income households.
Okay.
Kelly, I have a question for you. You referenced a federal tax incentive for low-income housing. I looked at some comparable apartments in Lebanon, one being Queen Anne Apartments, which I understand is a low-income housing. And then I compared that to Aspen Place, which is not low-income housing. Queen, these are ballpark numbers, but Queen Anne pays approximately $14,000 a year in property taxes, whereas Aspen Place pays approximately $140,000 a year. I imagine that's because of the federal incentive, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so out of that 14,000, how much of that, how much of a tax break are we going to give to them? Like, just say, City of Lebanon said, we don't require any taxes. That cuts it back a couple thousand, is that really incentive? Or are they, are they asking for an incentive from the city without getting the federal tax program?
So for, again, it would be based off of how the city would choose to develop the program. Usually, tax abatement programs can be only restricted to extremely low and low-income households and income restricted. Or you can, you know, give tax abatements for types of housing projects that you want to see developed, sort of thing, that aren't necessarily income restricted. With the focus being on, we've already done tools to help the market rate, this tool would be more towards the affordable side. It would be a suggestion to keep it for income restricted type units. But when you have that level of restricted units, you're going to need to get a level of federal tax credit program going. And the city's contribution would be smaller, for sure. But it would still be a local contribution, which does help for the scoring of the competitive tax program to show that there's local dollars going into the program. And I see that our consultant has put on their camera, so I'm thinking he might have a good answer to help with that, too.
Okay.
Sure, I think another, I'd everyone, Jabe and Kimmel with Cascadia Partners. So another distinction that's important there is, and this might be, I'm not familiar with those two projects, it might be the case for those two projects, but is that this tax, local property tax incentive could be made available to a for-profit private market developer who includes affordable units in their project, which they typically wouldn't include income restricted units, just a tall market rate for a for-profit developer. And those for-profit developers are not, do not get the type of property tax relief automatically that the nonprofit housing developers get. And so that might be the reason you're seeing the difference in what the tax revenue is coming from those projects, one of them might be owned by a nonprofit housing developer who automatically gets some relief from property taxes because of their nonprofit status. So this is kind of a tool that can be most useful for incentivizing private market developers to include income restricted units. They may also apply for those low-income housing tax credits through the federal process. And combine that with this. Yeah, I hope that kind of adds some light there.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions before we move on to the next set? So for the next sets, there's two action items associated with system development charges. So for a brief overview, system development charges are charged against each new development in the city or in some cases, significant redevelopment and additions to existing properties. For financial support of paying fair share towards our different systems of streets, parks, and our utility systems. Right now, the way that it is set up is that the system development charges are to be paid at time of building permit issuance or when the utility goes in. And the proposal would be to defer the payment of those charges until the certificate of occupancy for the development. Or temporary certificate of occupancy for the development, basically when it actually starts to be used. This takes a fairly large financial one-time fee from the developer in its overall need to get construction loan financing. It removes it from that that phase of the development to the the end of construction phase, which gives them a bit easier time to deal with their construction financing. We already have a process in-house in terms of putting together final certificates of occupancies, there's a checklist and a building permit process and final inspection process that's done. And so adding this to a final building permit process versus building permit issuance is not a huge modification to the city's function. But it does provide for that flexibility for developers in terms of getting their their construction financing. And the fees that we collect as part of the developments are not fees that are automatically used as part of infrastructure improvements associated with that development. So the delay of receiving the SDC funds just through the construction process does not necessarily equate to an impact to the city's SDC program. The states last year had done an evaluation of overall the SDC program and process throughout the states and identified that deferring SDCs to certificate of occupancy is an easy tool to help promote housing development while still ensuring that the fees are being collected in a timely manner for the city, so it does support the state's findings as well. So this one is pretty simple of an ask that the city can do to help with development without having any true financial impact to the city. And so that's the next item. Is there any questions on that one? So the second item for SDCs is the concept of scaling the the system development charges based off of unit size. We actually already do this for our streets SDC program that we just redid in 2021, I believe. And what it does is it creates basically a revenue neutral change where you're scaling the SDCs based off of the the size of a unit. And so smaller-sized units would have a lesser SDC charge because they would have a lesser population basis and use because it's a smaller unit versus a higher charge for the larger-sized developments. And so this would give the opportunity to slightly lessen the burden of somebody wanting to build, say, an accessory dwelling unit or a, you know, two small duplexes or something like that, it would give them the opportunity to have a lesser fee to promote the smaller, more affordable-type developments. While the cost of those smaller units is offset by the impacts of the larger units, so it doesn't equates to a change in the overall fees that we would receive from the city to the city. But it does equate for a more equitable distribution of the SDC charges. The only one that we could feasibly do this with right now is our parks SDCs, because that's just a flat rate. And it's based off of a single-family home versus a commercial-type development. Whereas our utilities are based off of the pipe sizes. And those are pretty uniform in code of what are required for effective development, so. This would again allow for a small change, a tool that could be provided to promote that lower-income pipe development without having a real financial impact to the city. And those are basically the three real financial incentives that we have on the table. This last one on the slide, action 2.4, that is the the density bonus incentives, which are technically considered development incentives, but we did cover them as a land-based strategy as well. So we've already discussed those in previous sections, so I don't know if we need to cover that at this point in time, so. Does anybody have any questions, concerns, or are we all good to include those as part of the production strategy?
I think we're good, you can continue.
So for land-based strategies, this is a set of actions that involve purchasing property or disposing a property or holding land for the purposes of developing affordable housing. Land in and of itself is a significant cost for the development of housing. And if the city can be a partner in solving that land cost issue, then that helps to promote the development of affordable housing and can lower the costs that can be passed on to consumers in the form of some lower rents or sales prices, and since we are in the game, we can help dictate that those costs actually get passed, that those lower costs get passed on to the the actual end user. So for this, there are four proposed strategies. Number one is to prioritize the use of public land for housing needs. This is sort of a if an opportunity arises, if we have excess land in our city, if something is surplus, then we would prioritize that that surplus land is made available for the development of affordable housing or needed housing. We would also, as part of action item 3.2, evaluate ways to support the local land acquisition of banking. There's a tool where a city can purchase excess land if funding is available. And that land is then held for the purposes of affordable housing. And then there's also the community land trust option, which is basically land is held as part of a nonprofit. And housing units are purchased and are built. And then kind of like a condominium, people can purchase the buildings on the land and they're income restricted, and then as they get sold, they're income restricted. But the land stays, it's a land of trust to ensure that the housing units on that land are maintained for And then finally, for partnerships with institutional landowners such as faith-based organizations within our community to talk to them about if they have excess land and surplus land, if they'd be willing to either donate or sell that land for the development purposes for affordable housing. So these are all if opportunities arise, if there's an ability to do so, then we could do it. I would like to see if perhaps our consultants might have some more in-depth information they'd like to provide on each of these. These are not tools that are readily used, and so they have a better understanding of how they would be employed than than I could best dictate, so perhaps Jamie can jump in here.
Sure, glad to, so. I think on the first one is a little more straightforward, and I think Kelly characterized it. The idea here is by including this action in your housing production strategy, you're basically just making a commitment that you will try to prioritize using excess land for an affordable housing or other type of housing development that meets the key needs, housing needs in the community. It doesn't commit you to do that in every case where you have excess land. And that is obviously a case-by-case basis, but just including this action in the HPS is showing a commitment that you will consider that when that that opportunity arises. The other three are a bit less specific in terms of what the action the city will take. And so I guess I would start with the second one. So some cities have gone as far to actually establish a land bank that the local jurisdiction operates, so City of Eugene is one example on this. They have a affordable housing land bank that is administered and owned by the city, it's publicly-owned land that's set aside. And they actively acquire sites that come up for sale and they hold them. And the advantage of that is that the timing for an affordable housing developer to build housing, the timing of when they get the funding to build and when they have the land is often not lined up. And so it can be difficult for them to acquire the site at the same time they're trying to acquire federal, state, variety of different funding sources to actually build the housing. So the land bank is a way to say, we have these sites available, we're kind of holding them for when the the financing lines up. So that can be something operated by a local government. But we have not committed the city to kind of doing it in that way as part of this action. It also could be something that is a kind of collaborative effort of multiple nonprofits that work in housing development in the region. And could, maybe, the city may not be actually administering the land bank, but would help to identify sites that might be appropriate, perhaps contribute funding if there's funding available. And so it's it's left a little bit more open-ended about what the city's specific Um, and so it's, it's left uh a little bit more open-ended about what the city's specific role is in land banking. Uh, but the the concept is to play a role in trying to um support a land banking operation uh in Lebanon. And the the second two are kind of extensions of that in a way. Uh, so different uh organizations that are involved in land baking, um, community land trusts. Uh, and then also um institutional landowners are often a great um source of uh excess land, and so a lot of churches, in particular, have more land than they need. Uh, and so just including those specific strategies, um, because we think that is a a more concrete way the city can play a role in land making.
You have any questions on the land-based strategies?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, you're flying through this. It makes me very happy. Um, so this last bit is really just a um public projects and resources. Uh, it's basically, hey, we're already doing this. Let's get some kudos in the housing production strategy and and say that we're already doing it. Um, but it's an important factor, too, because it it demonstrates that the city has public investments and supports towards uh development of needed housing. Um, and so it's uh sort of just a a kudos roadshow here. Um, for these items, I'm so sorry for my cat. Um, these items are continue to target and prioritize infrastructure to support housing. Um, we have that in there. We do already have quite a few of infrastructure projects that are going on to support housing. Uh, I think case in point, number one is the West Side Interceptor Project. Um, number two is to continue to use urban renewal, uh urban renewal investments to support housing. Um, this one is definitely a continue. Um, we do have our urban renewal districts, which are fully funded. Um, but we we do have um projects that are already listed there, and a number of them are infrastructure-related projects that would open up land for housing development. Um, in the next eight-year cycle, when some of our um urban renewal areas might be falling off of uh our lists, we might be able to look at some other unique opportunities with urban renewal tools to um specifically support affordable housing. Um, but for right now, it's uh we're doing a good job by using those as investment tools for infrastructure to open up that land for housing development. Um, continue to assist uh and pursue opportunities with wetland mitigation. Um, that's just going to be me continuing to bang my head against the wall. Um, but we're going to keep doing it. Um, and we are actively working with several other organizations where we're going to collectively bang our head against the wall um to try to solve the situation. Um, but uh we are constantly working on that, and that is a a barrier, and so we we should be able to include it in this of a strategy that that's going to be something we continue to focus on. Um, continue to leverage that CDVG funds for housing rehab. Um, as council has already uh done, we have been authorized to apply for another round of CDVG funding for the Lynn County uh low-income housing rehab program. Um, and we'll continue to be good partners with that and then see if there's any additional opportunities we might have to expand the CDVG fund opportunities in Lebanon. And then finally, to provide information and technical assistance to all developers. Um, this is something that we do on a day-to-day basis over the counter, but seeing if there's any additional opportunities, provide some key information about how to support and promote um specific needed housing in our community to to get it going. So, um, it's kind of, we do this, we're going to keep doing it unless council tells us not to. So is there anything on the list that you don't want us to do?
Doesn't look like we have any questions.
Okay.
So that, that concludes your uh your briefings.
Yeah, so so pretty much, I couldn't stop sharing the screen here really quick. Um, so pretty much where we're at is uh if council is accepting of all of those items that we've sort of laid out today. Um, that is the the breadth of what we're proposing to the in the housing production strategy. Um, that's going to dictate kind of how we move forward over the next eight years. Um, that included with the land base, the the land use strategies that we have discussed uh multiple times over the last couple of months. Um, we'll conclude it. Uh, unless there's any modifications or additions that you want to see in it, the next step is for us to finish up the document and then bring it forward for adoption.
I guess this is uh maybe a question more for council, but are we okay with the tax abatement idea for under um the first part of that plan? Is that something we're interested in as a group?
I think this is just clarifying. These are just things we can use. They're not things we have to use. It just gives us the opportunity. So if we saw a type of housing we wanted to promote, we could offer a tax abatement.
It's a strategy. It allows us a strategy to move forward.
My, my reaction to that is for low-income housing, what you're doing is you're bringing in more people with less income for us and more tax on our infrastructure. So that concerns me, and I know that might be a simplistic view of it, but that's my concern in it.
I I share that. Um, it looks like uh
I do, too.
It's uh the uh, I was gonna say, uh, yes, we're, we we need, we know, we all know that there's a need for low-income housing. However, there's also when you bring more people in, there's an increase in services, the basic services for a city. Um, we're running into that with, you know, our law enforcement, you know, water, sewer, all the things, and then um you know, you know, uh, Counselor Savage brought up a point with the with the property tax of one apartment complex in comparison to another. That's quite a, quite a, quite a difference. So um that, I think that's something to really keep in mind and think about and uh, you know, continue to educate yourself on it because there's probably aspects of it that we're not thinking of. Um, but my first impression is like, whoa, we're going to be going way up here with with additional uh people. However, does that increase uh support the services that are going to be needed for that increase?
At some point, I think it's algorithmic. How does, how does this housing project strategy impact people who already have a house? Is that, do we know if that's going to make it, I know it's speculation, that can make a house that's already there more valuable outside of the economic in- impact that's already going on? Does that make it more valuable or does it make it less valuable?
You mean for like appraisal and and
Just overall, I I'm not an economist.
Computing their 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 property taxes in the future.
Or anybody's house.
I think, like Dave, I was kind of wanting some clarification. By us adopting this, we're not, we're not setting any hard and fast rules or making tax policy changes. We're just including this as a an option on the table for the future that if it, if it was going to come to that, we would have a, we would have a big, long discussion on that. I, is that correct?
Yeah, so the way that it's drafted in the housing production strategy is it just simply says that council is going to be willing to have the conversation and do the analysis of the impacts of putting together a tax abatement program. It doesn't say that we're going to do it. It doesn't establish the rules of how we're going to do it. It just says that we're going to have the conversation. If at the end of that conversation, council says this is not something that we want to move forward with, then we have still fulfilled the responsibilities and requirements of the housing production strategy by doing the evaluation and identifying what the conclusions of that evaluation are.
Just another tool in our box to
Right, right. Okay, that's just, that's just what I wanted to clarify before we said, yeah, this looks good.
And it does look like our consultant has um a point to add.
Sure, Kelly covered one of my two points pretty well, which was, this is again not a commitment to uh implement a tax abatement program. Um, uh, one thing that might be helpful for you to know is that the tax abatement programs offer uh a lot of flexibility. You do have to set it up and define criteria upon which you're going to accept applications, so um, it can't be a kind of just a case-by-case basis. Um, like, although you can review it case-by-case and deny certain projects. But the key, one key thing there is that you can cap the number of projects or the total amount of property tax revenue that you would abate in any given year. And so you could say we've given out the number of tax abatements we feel is feasible uh fiscally for us in one year to do, uh, come back next year and apply. Um, so that's, that's another option in there, just to limit the potential fiscal impact of the program.
Is there any other questions or comments of on this subject? Director Hart, do you have any additional comments or questions of council?
Uh, as long as it seems that there's a consensus, which it does, uh, I would like to just thank you all for the massive amount of time that we have taken on this so far. Um, it has been a journey and a a learning process for all of us, and and I'm looking forward to getting a completed document so we can start to actually implementing some tools. So um, then the next step, like I said, is we'll, we'll go back and finalize a document for your review of how all of this lays out. Um, and a potential timeline for implementation, and then we'll, we'll bring it back sometime this summer.
Sometime what? I missed that. Summer, okay. Alrighty, well, I would, if there's no other comments or questions, I would like to thank everybody that's online. Uh, Director Hart, we really appreciate your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Yeah, feel better.
Oh, sorry, I had to do this online, guys. It's so awkward.
So with uh, if if that's it, um, like I said, thank you for everybody, and uh we'll adjourn this work session.